A pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the June 17th, 2024 work session of the Shawnee County Board of County Commissioners. My name is Kevin Cook. I serve as the chair this year. Joining me today is Commissioner Aaron Mays. Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioner Bill Rippon was not able to join us, but we do have our county councillor also present, Mr. Richecker. Good morning.
Good morning.
We do have a work session this morning, and on our first item is to talk about AOT, which is assisted outpatient treatment. And this is a presentation by the Shawnee County Court, and I'd welcome Chief Judge Stephen Eberts to get us started.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, thank you. And Commissioner Mays, thank you as well. I am the Chief Judge of the Shawnee County District Court, and I'm joined here today with Bill Persinger, who is the president and CEO of Valeo Behavioral Healthcare. And we want to take a few minutes to talk to you about a new concept, which is AOT, which is assisted outpatient treatment. And it's an idea that has the potential to dramatically help mentally ill people in our community and lower the cost for their care and treatment to the county. So exactly what is AOT? Commissioner Cook, you said it is assisted outpatient treatment. And Mr. Persinger is going to explain a little more detail about that shortly from the mental health side. But essentially, it is a specialty court. It's similar to drug court or veterans' court. We think it's time for Shawnee County to join the growing rank of courts that have AOT in Kansas and across the country. And we are here today to ask for your help to make that a reality. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Persinger to explain the details of AOT from the mental health perspective and how Valeo can help. And then I'll come back out and close out with some comments. So, Mr. Persinger, go right ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. S, I am Bill Persinger, Chief Executive Officer at Valeo Behavioral Healthcare till about August 3rd. And will approach my final days with all the vim and vigor that I can muster in my advancing years. So thank you for your time this morning. And we're joined here by others who have an interest in AOT, assisted outpatient treatment. I think the thing that I want, and of course, we'll all stand for questions, but when I'm finished with my brief remarks, I'll turn it back over to Judge Eberts. But for me, these kind of things exist in a context. We're not here to ask for support for something that just kind of popped up. It's going to live in its own little space with no connection. So for Valeo, major part of our strategic plans involve the public safety. How can we serve the needs of the public in terms of behavioral healthcare, especially where there are issues of risk involved? Suicide, mental illness, homelessness, all these things, methamphetamine addiction abuse, all these things that I think matter to the people, and it will help people recover and are consistent with the needs and wants and the challenges of city, county, state government. So when you just take a look at that big intersection where behavioral healthcare, particularly public behavioral healthcare, Valeo, Breakthrough House, Family Service and Guidance Center, Mirror Inc., some of the other providers that are nonprofit around here intersect with the whole of the judicial system. Courts, law enforcement partners, others, family members, there's a large discussion, service, planning, and connection area. Here we call it the Intersection Coalition. I think you guys get notice of it and are aware of it and attend. So AOT would exist and be a cousin, be part of a spoken wheel, if you will, to programs like the Co-Responder Program. They mentioned drug courts, mental health courts, vet courts, the Alternative Sentencing Court for the city, you know, the mental health screenings that we do 24 hours a day at Valeo and other things we do that exist along and continue. Even the amount of money that City of Topeka invests in CIT, you know, crisis intervention training for most of its police force, County Sheriff's Department also invests in that. So this AOT would exist on, in a large context of a great effort here locally and really help cap off what we do and balance out that wheel and spoke, if you will. So the idea is that, and it's right, but when you have to go to court and say to the court that this individual has a mental illness, it's a severe mental illness, they can't participate in their own care and treatment right now, they're dangerous to themselves or to other people, or, I think, within the last 15 or 20 years, likely to be dangerous to self or others, that's a pretty high bar to meet when you go to court to deprive someone of their liberties for a few hours or a few days or a few weeks. And so over time, the court, society, providers, interested parties have raised that standard, you know, especially here in Kansas, you know, where, you know, we have a real eye towards individual freedom. So to deprive somebody of their freedom takes a pretty high bar, and that's the right thing to do. What, and this doesn't lower that standard at all, but it gives us a chance to intervene and say to an individual through a fourth proceeding that, look, you need treatment. I know you're unwilling right now. You know, you probably do qualify for the state hospital, but we have an alternative for you. We, we're going to compel you to a course of outpatient treatment that will be monitored, tailored, individualized to you, and we will, the court, we and all the court's partners will work with you to a time when you don't need that order, when you can participate in voluntary care and continue on a recovery journey. So to me, it exists in context. Families and others have been asking for a long time, gosh, my brother, my dad, my child, you know, my neighbor, you know, they're doing these things that really concern us. And we do screenings and often brought by law enforcement or family and just find that there's really, that we don't really think there's probable cause to go have a petition filed and all that kind of procedure happening. So this, this gives us an alternative. I think, and all we've done here is take some highlights from about a 50-page document, which we can send you if you like. But it really, there's a lot of statistics on the outcomes, savings, partnerships, and we've done a great job, all of us, through the Intersection Coalition and Liv Well, formerly, I can't even remember the name of him, oh, Heartland Healthy Neighborhoods have set up a mental health collaborative. So we've talked about things like competency stand trial services, expanding those into jail, actually doing restorations to competency in the jail, which is a whole nother kind of, you know, spoke on that wheel. But these are all, in my mind, kind of cousin, kind of closely related programs. So what we've done here is give you the highlights, but there are a lot of information out of Texas, Oklahoma, and other states that have implemented, other jurisdictions that have implemented AOT. To me, it's a fine and contextual way to do things. I'll stand for questions, but more importantly, I should refer back to Judge Eberts for remarks.
Bill, let's kind of help me out a little bit. When we're talking about the assisted outpatient treatment programs such as AOT, 200 years ago, if a person was having a mental health crisis, sanatoriums were probably where people went to. 100 years ago, we had the Topeka State Hospital, and if you were having a mental health crisis, it did not seem that there was a very high bar to be getting admitted to a state hospital.
Very low bar.
And then we had that pendulum swing pretty rapidly throughout the 80s into the 90s that we raised that bar of what it took to be able to be committed to a state hospital. And then in the 90s into the 2000s, we had the legislature cutting back on mental health services at state hospitals with a directive that we wanted more family care, community-based care.
Correct.
But that funding never really seemed to be matched up with what was previously provided to a state hospital.
Correct.
And that burden then shifted to your local communities, county commission, to pick up that gap that was previously supported by the state of Kansas. Am I following so far?
All that's, it's a great history, a great perspective. All that is true, and so I appreciate that. Thank you.
And so where we find ourselves now in 2024 is if a person is way, way, way out on the spectrum of their critical thinking, they're going to be able to still be admitted into a state hospital, an Osawatomi, or maybe even a 72-hour hold at Stormont Vale West in Topeka.
Right.
But unless they are way, way, way out on that spectrum, there's a gap of the in-between.
Correct.
We know that you're not able to really care for yourself, but you don't meet the threshold of being committed. And is that our target audience of what this AOT is about?
Correct.
So from a law enforcement standpoint, I know that, and the court standpoint, we often feel like our, our hands are tied, that there's not anything that I can do. The family members are crying out. We get the calls from the family members that, why aren't you doing something? My brother, my uncle, my aunt, my sister, my relative, my friend is having a crisis, and you guys just don't seem to care. And this is answering that?
Yes, sir. And I do hear those things. I know you do, too. And it's frustrating for providers, too, who want to help, and somebody is so close. You're exactly right. And in fact, we're working on secure beds for here in Shawnee County. And oftentimes, what we see, either on a voluntary or an involuntary basis, even if somebody has to go to Osawatomi State Hospital, people are often within just a few hours of getting back on their feet. It's amazing what some peace and some supervision, the right kind of medication can do for an individual, get them back up on their feet, sometimes in a matter of hours or days. And not a cure, as we all know, but, you know, great medication and other support. And by the way, we downsized our state hospitals because we could. There's always been discussion, did we go too far? Looking back, we probably did. And so Kate Adams and others are looking at putting some beds back. But we see so many people who are so close, if we could just find a way to get them in that door, even though they might be not wanting to go in through that door, that what we can do for people sometimes, together with families and others, within a few hours is amazing. The turnaround is amazing. So, yeah, I, this would really fill a gap, it would fill, you know, a gap that the public sees and often is frustrated with. And it takes a lot of study to understand the nuances of the Commitment Act. And fortunately, we've got legal professionals here in the room that can answer those questions, including yourself. But I can tell you that the bar was raised over time because it could have been, it could be raised and it should be raised because we have alternatives now other than an institution, which before, about 1963, at least in the state of Kansas, mental health care occurred largely in mental institutions. You know, tens of thousands of people living in, you know, in state hospitals, well, not that many, probably eight, seven or eight thousand. So, and now it's down to a few hundred at any given time. And from Shawnee County, probably, you know, less than, less than a handful at any given time because we could. We had programs, along with other partners in the community, where we could not just provide counseling and an hour of counseling and some medicine. We could go to homes, we could work under bridges, we could go to nursing homes, we could help people in their home, help find jobs, all that stuff to wrap services around people eventually, I mean, was happening at about the same time that society was reviewing, okay, what, what is the standard for depriving an individual of their freedom because of a psychiatric illness? So these things occurred rightly over time. We've always had trouble having funding catch up to good ideas, and we think this is another good idea that can save dollars, time, dignity, preserve resources.
So what are some of the services that Valeo would contemplate being a contributory for AOT?
You know, and I don't want to sound, you know, flip, but more of the same, Commissioner. Crisis intervention, medication, we do somewhere north of 300 antipsychotic injectable shots a month, but all voluntary. People come in for a long-acting shot. Many of them don't have to take a pill every day then. Compliance goes up, adjustments, recovery increases. We do more of what we do now. Crisis intervention, case management, peer support, housing, employment, you know, working with our partners on social services. You know, one of the big needs we see is access to food. Of course, we're all aware of the concerns in the community about access to shelter, not only for people who are unsheltered, but people who just can't afford rent, you know, and may have to couch surf. You know, it's hard to be healthy physically or mentally when you don't have a regular place to live. You may be indoors for now, it may be safe, it may be warm, you're getting food, but if you have to pick up and go every few days, especially if you're a family with children, it's a tough road to hoe. So I, I think this is another one of those ideas that can and should happen. And so Valeo would just need personnel to do more of that kind of work. And we could fit it into other initiatives we have going, such as our community treatment team, our crisis case management program, the program we have that delivers psychiatric medicine to people every day, seven days a week. These things, for us, that just has a community mental health center fit together as well, this program does. So I can't tell you how many, Commissioner, but another therapist or two, a couple of case managers, probably another team, five or six people. So.
Okay. Commissioner Mays?
So I guess in, how many people in Shawnee County do you think this would benefit?
Well.
I mean, obviously, like, the greater good, but at the same time, I mean, specifically, how many people are going to be eligible for this program, do you see?
I think I, what I would say, and it is the problem with most helping programs, is that the more you do, the more there is to do because we have a need and we find out all of a sudden there's a bunch of people waiting, and wow, they come forward. I think if we build it, they'll come, and we might be a little bit overwhelmed with it. I can tell you right now, between, at Valeo, we hold about 55 people a year voluntarily. I say hold, they've been to court, they've had due process, we just can't get them into the state hospital today because there's a waiting list, which the state is working hard to address, by the way. So, gosh, you know, I, it, I, it would be definitely an ongoing caseload for a team or two at Valeo. I know, you know, we'd need court personnel and others, and I couldn't hazard a guess, but, you know, more than 50, probably less than a couple of hundred. I know when I was in Emporia, at any given time, we probably had 35 or 40 people on outpatient commitments, which is similar to this in my mind. And so our population's probably twice what that seven-county region was, and so I'd hazard a guess, 125, 130 people at any given time. And a team might be able, depending on the severity of the cases, manage, you know, 25, 30, 40 people. Just, and of course, people are going to come and go from that as well. So, but I think what it'll do is eventually drive hospitalizations down even further, get ahead of some crises, give us a way to introduce ourselves to people, even though you're forced to be here with us, you know? And you can, you can come and go. You can live your life, you can work, you can be at home, be with your family, but you do have to show up two days a week, you do have to answer the door when we show up to help you out, I mean, that kind of thing. Those are, would be part of a compelled, part of a court order. Judge, have I misspoken?
I know, but I have some more information I could provide if you'd like to do.
Yes, please. And when, Judge, when you come up, I guess one of the things that would occur to me is a person that's in crisis, they're not just in crisis in a isolated time, they're in crisis for a period of time until they can help get regulated back to a sense of calm. And so they're committing maybe multiple offenses, and whether those offenses are personal in nature resulting in maybe protective orders or criminal cases. And it would seem to me that that's what we're trying to address, is the number of cases.
Yeah, it is to address the number of cases and people in mental health crisis, really mechanically and procedurally how the AOT would operate. And to answer your question specifically, I'll give you some numbers here in just a moment, Commissioner Mays. But long story short, what we see is we have people that come in, they're in crisis, there's a petition by typically the district attorney's office to have this person involuntary, involuntarily committed, and they go to Osawatomi for that commitment. Osawatomi stabilizes them with treatment and medication, and then essentially at that point, they don't meet criteria to be housed involuntarily anymore, so they're discharged back to the community. And Valeo offers great supports and services for those people, but if those people then don't want to remain compliant with their program, they deviate, they go off program, we're back having another case filed against them, it's kind of this revolving door process that goes on. But associated with that revolving door is the homelessness issue. There's people committing crimes and going to jail, drives up the costs of participation of law enforcement and the jail itself. So this program is intended to have that patient who, they've met that, they've met that threshold at the state hospital where they're regulated now. Instead of releasing them back to the community and discharging or dismissing their case, they agree to be on an outpatient order with the court and with Valeo. And so when they come back to the community, their case isn't dismissed. They have an incentive then to come to court, to see me or another judge as a part of the AOT program. And then you have a team from Valeo who is there, a support team for them, to help them with housing, to help them with mental health treatment, medications, et cetera. And so the intent is to give them an incentive to follow their program, and if they follow their program, then the case can ultimately be dismissed, but they have that support network in place. That's, that's really the goal of AOT. It does, there's some statistics that it dramatically reduces that turnstile or return of people coming back to court and rehospitalizations. In fact, there's some numbers in the material that Bill gave you, that up to 87% reduction in rehospitalizations. The effect that the AOT court can have, and you might say the black robe effect of having a judge involved, reduces arrests and incarcerations, the rehospitalizations, suicides, and homelessness. And he's given you some numbers on all of that. I think I can say, and it's fair to say, that, that Bill has the team in place to move forward with AOT. The court has the, I will volunteer to be the judge to handle the program, my assistant will help me operate that program, we'll have a courtroom and time dedicated each month to this program. Those are all kind of the soft dollar cost that the court's willing to absorb to try and make this program work. The, the ask I have, I guess, for the county commission is the one thing that I cannot get funding for, and I've looked for grant funding, is for legal counsel to represent these folks at those hearings. And they have a right to have an attorney represent them at the hearing, and the vast majority of these folks are indigent and can't afford to hire a lawyer. So we appoint a lawyer for them, and we have lawyers that are on contract. But I don't have enough funding in my current budget to pay for the additional time the lawyers might be involved in these cases. So to bring those lawyers up to parity with our other contract lawyers, it's about $153,000 is what the court would need added to its budget. Now, let me give you some numbers, though, to help show you that I think that's an investment. So if you use from some of the statistics that Bill has provided, it's about a $7,500 cost each time somebody is readmitted to the state hospital process. And we found in 2023, there were 50 patients who met the criteria to go into AOT. So if you add about $7,500 per patient and about 50 of them, you're looking at about $375,000. Well, if you subtract back out the only fee that we're asking for, which is the attorney fee assistance, you're going to have a net savings around $222,000 if those statistics were, you know, bear out and are true. And there's also the soft time, time of people at the jail, time of people at Valeo and the hospitals that won't be utilized for the turnstile folks. So that, that's the general pitch, you might say, that the court has. I think the statistics and the history of AOT shows that it works and it will save costs over time. But the most important part is it's helping people in the community, it's helping them with their mental wellness, helping them get better and get the treatment that they need. The other stuff is a byproduct that benefits the entire community. So about, Commissioner Mays, about 50 cases right now, I think, would go through this AOT process to start, and people that meet qualifications for that. I don't know if there's a representative from the district attorney's office here today. I don't think there is. I think I'm safe in saying that the district attorney's office is on board with this as well. I've had some discussions with the district attorney and some of his staff. So I think everybody here is ready to start AOT and implement it. We just need some assistance from you to make that happen. And I'm happy to answer any of the questions that you might have as well.
So if I look at just some rough numbers, even at $150,000, if we know that the housing cost of a mentally ill person at Shawnee County Jail is $300 a day, if we divide 150 by $300 a day, that's 500, and then if you divide it by 50 people, that's 10 days. So if we were able to remove a person from being housed 10 days, we're just shifting that cost. And so realistically, what we're talking about is rather than having somebody housed at the jail for a longer period of time, being able to get them services and get them out of the jail to shift that cost from a department of corrections cost to a mental health court cost. Is that inaccurate?
I think that's accurate, yes.
Good.
Yeah.
So we're still, the Shawnee County taxpayers are still paying the money. It's just, where do you want to spend it? Do you want to spend it at the jail, or do you want to spend it in services?
Yeah, although I think there is ultimately a possible savings because of the fact that if you can stop these people from returning repeatedly, we're really talking about the folks who come back and come back and come back. So I think in the long run, there is a cost savings that can be realized.
All right. Commissioner Mays?
Yeah, so as you guys know, we're building a mental health module to jail. It hasn't broken ground yet, but it should be underway soon. How do you envision this working with that? I mean, are those the folks that are going to go through this program, or?
I'd have to talk to Director Cole more about that, but I think some of those folks might be able to go through the program here locally, and that potentially would speed up the process for their return to the community as well. We also, Bill mentioned it, there's kind of another spoke in this wheel that he talked about, which is competency, and it's returning people to competency to stay in trial in criminal cases. That's another benefit of utilizing a program like this, and it also has some cost savings involved as well. That would be folks who are sitting in the Shawnee County Jail waiting to go to Larned State Hospital, and the year, the wait time on that has been from a year to 18 months for people to go through that program. So if we can also work with Valeo to, and the director at the jail, to have a similar program at the Shawnee County Jail, not send people out to Osawatomi, but particularly Larned, get them restored to competency here, I think you're going to see an even greater cost savings for everyone involved. I will still need the same lawyers, though. That's the issue I run into. And it would be the same lawyers providing the services, whether it's AOT or competency restoration.
Okay.
I think it will have some benefit as well, yes.
And again, just for the sake of disclosure and clarification, by state statute, if a person is charged with a felony offense and they fall under indigency, those are paid by the state of Kansas through the Board of Indigent Defense.
They are.
But if a person falls under mental health, child in need of care, juvenile offender, misdemeanor, commitment, they are picked up, it's, by statute, it's the county's responsibility to pay for those costs.
That is correct.
And the state doesn't have an offset.
No.
And so those are all things that the state has pushed down on the local communities to be responsible for.
And I have looked for grant funding for this particular cost for us, and I cannot find grant funding for it. I have inquired whether there might be some county funding available through drug or alcohol services or programs that might help offset these costs, and I'm waiting to hear more about that. And if there is, well, I'll adjust the numbers in the request. But I particularly wanted both of you and Commissioner Rippon to know that this will be a part of the court's budget request next Thursday, a week from Thursday, and I can come back and give more information about not only AOT, but the competency and restoration services as well, if you need more information about that.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Our other item for discussion this morning at the work session is the Shawnee County Fair Board, and we have representatives from the fair board here. I'm going to have you come on up and talk to us about our Shawnee County Fair and upcoming events.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Ashlyn Mingerelli. I am a Shawnee County Fair Board member. This is my third year on the fair board. Also today, we have Sherry Weiner. She is also a fair board member. And then my husband, Dustin Mingerelli, who is a, not a fair board member, but he is a partner in crime and support for us. He is a 4-H parent and former 4-Her as well, so we're very knowledgeable about what we want to do as a fair board. Today, we're coming to talk to you about a little bit of the history of the fair and where we're hoping that the direction of the fair can go in the future. Very quickly, you know, the history of the Shawnee County Fair, but the first record of fair in Topeka, Kansas was in 1871. In 1880, a Kansas fair association was organized to plan a Kansas state fair, which the first fair was held by this organization in September of 1881. However, in 1913, the Kansas state fair did become the official state fair in Hutchison, Kansas by the state legislation, which then changed the fair here in Topeka to be called the Kansas Free Fair. In 1917, there was a grandstand that was built with permanent livestock buildings and pony barns. The name of the fair changed in 1958 to the Mid-American Fair. A fun fact about that fair was that at the time, it actually, the record number of people came was 410,000 people came to the fair that was hosted here in Topeka, Kansas. Again, the name changed in 1977 to the Kansas State, or Sunflower State Expo. And then in 1987, the Kansas Expo Center, which is now the Stormont Events Center, was built. In 1987, was also the Agriculture Hall. And nineteen-eighty-seven was also the Agriculture Hall, or Agriculture Hall, Heritage Hall, Livestock Pavilion, and the Exposition Hall, which is now referred to as Manor Conference Center, were remodeled, but they were original structures from the prior fairgrounds. I've thrown in a couple pictures of the history and what was there. These are pictures from nineteen-fourteen and nineteen-fifteen, and a picture of the grandstands of what the fair used to be. Another picture of the Shawnee County fairgrounds, kind of what we envisioned the fair being, well attended by many people, big event that people want to be at. In twenty-twenty-one, almost all of our Fair Board members came on as new members of the Fair Board. The Shawnee County Commissioners, when we came to our first budget meeting, challenged us to grow and expand the Shawnee County Fair to raise and to raise money to help cover the cost of our event expenses. We feel that the importance of the county fair to is, has an importance to the, oh, try again, importance of county fairs to their community. We feel that the county fair does have an importance to the community. County fairs are held annually on established dates at a set location in a in a county to exhibit and showcase 4-Hers and FFA, local agriculture and livestock, and to promote community and organizations and businesses. The goal of a county fair is to bring the community together through exposure to agricultural experiences and entertainment events. A county fair brings income to the local economy and allows organizations and businesses to promote their goods and services. And just a side note with this, the Fair Board that is elected to serve our Shawnee County Fair Board is all voluntary. So we have a board of fifteen members that volunteer their time to plan this event, that we want to be a community event, that also is a special time for our 4-Hers and FFA youth in our community. The Shawnee County Fair public attractions, we've really tried to expand this. 4-H events open to the public are the Horse Show, exhibits from 4-H Clubs and FFA Chapters, livestock shows and the auction, bake sale and champion food sale auctions, the dog show and the Shawnee County Pancake Feed, which has been an over-forty-year tradition at the Shawnee County Fair. The Shawnee County Fair Board has open class exhibits and shows for the public, train displays, bounce houses, a kids' day where we try and bring in daycares and the youth organizations that are in our county, hot pickle eating contest, the Shawnee County Pedal Pull, which is done by the Farm Bureau of Shawnee County, a cornhole tournament, and a car show. The vision of Shawnee County Fair Board, we want our fair to be bigger and we want it to be more. We want to expand the Shawnee County Fair events. We want Shawnee County Fair to be more than just an FFA and 4-H project exhibition. We want to generate excitement about attending the Shawnee County Fair from the community. We want to pursue local business sponsorships to support the Shawnee County Fair. Shawnee County is losing money by us not being able to bring in a larger crowd, as well as we're losing sponsorships to surrounding counties. Businesses are supporting our local and not our local fair, they're supporting our surrounding counties because we don't have anything to offer them at our fair. We also want to organize or create a signature event that is known at the Shawnee County Fair. Ideas that the fair has had that we can't bring in because of how we're currently, where we're currently at, is we'd like to have with our quilt show homemade pies filled by the local women's church group. We want to have a bandstand and local artists come in and maybe an entertainment tent. We want to have sponsored meals, like maybe the pork producers can come in and do a pork burger feed in the evenings. Fiesta mahakana candidates can come in and promote their candidacies. We would like to have a farmer's market, maybe an outdoor movie night, local food truck vendors to come in. We'd like to have sponsored displays and promotions. We'd like to have a featured event, maybe a rodeo or a bull buck out or mutton busting, a demolition derby, a tractor pull, a carnival or a bounce house event, or mud runs. This is one of our neighboring counties, Douglas County Fair. Just the vision, this is what we see as the fair. And if you talk to any 4-Hers who were former 4-Hers, I was a career 4-Her in Riley County, and this is what our fairgrounds looked like. It had a carnival, it had a building, it had outbuildings where our animals were exhibited. It's a county event that everybody in Riley County is very proud of attending. There was a rodeo that happened, the carnival would come in every year, we'd have livestock shows, and then you can see that there's vendors that lined the strip or the walkway. So this is what I envisioned as the county fair, because this is what I grew up in. Crawford County Fair, I'm gonna throw my husband in here, he was a Crawford County 4-Her for a career. The Crawford County Fair brings in a demolition derby, they bring in rodeos, they have live entertainment and bandstands, they have community businesses, they have an Angels Among Us, for example, they have a building that, they have seven different pancakes or sponsors for this Angels Among Us building that come in, and everybody is so excited to support this community business. People come to the fair just to see that and then wander around. It's way more than just a 4-H exhibit. I stole this from a Crawford County mom, and it really touched me a lot. It says, paraphrased a little bit, but basically, 4-H, this is our sport. Youth are dedicated to a sport, spend hours practicing weightlifting, conditioning, and practicing to get better for their sport season. 4-Hers work all year long to be able to be, to show off their efforts during the fair. It's their performance. The county fair is the community's chance to come and cheer on all these kids and their efforts, just as they would attend any sports, activity, plays, music, event, or performance. So putting on my 4-H mom hat, this is not a Fair Board event, but the Shawnee County Pancake Feed. My husband and I took over the pancake feed in twenty-twenty, except we didn't get to have a pancake feed because of COVID. However, we started in twenty-twenty-one. We originally had a restaurant supporting it, and unfortunately, the 4-Hers, because this is our only county 4-H fundraiser that they do, we're not making the money that they should have. So my husband and I decided that we would take on this as our 4-H project. We took our kids from our 4-H club, and we went to local businesses and organizations and asked for sponsorships. The kids raised over two-thousand dollars in sponsorships from local businesses. Maybe they're collecting supplies, maybe they're collecting money so that they can go and buy the supplies that are needed. But the kids go out and they speak to local sponsorships. What we found out was many local businesses and organizations didn't even know a county fair existed in Shawnee County, which was very disappointing. They'd heard of 4-H, but didn't know there was a county fair. So in these three years, we've now flipped it so that all the, a hundred percent of the proceeds benefit our Shawnee County 4-Hers. The pancake feed was previously not a community event, but now it is. So when we go out with our kids, we have businesses that are like, yep, we have money ready for you, we're excited about it, they want to support, and they want to be there. They like the idea of 4-H, they like what the kids are telling them. When they come, the pancake feed is promoting kids learning public speaking, gaining leadership skills, and community service to the patrons. This is just a picture of the pancake feed from last year. However, you see that our youth, we encourage the youth to be the ones serving. You can see this picture right here with our number seven. Fun story about that, two 4-Hers from the Silver Lake 4-H Club came in, they said, what job do we need to be in? I said, I need somebody to hand out pancakes. What I didn't know is I probably picked the two shyest kids from their 4-H club, handed them a platter of pancakes and said, go talk to people, because that's not in their comfort zone. And what their 4-H leader told me later was, oh, my gosh, I have to take this picture. And she snapped this photo, that she goes, I've never heard these kids say five words before. And they were out asking people, do you want pancakes? So it's pretty cool to see kids blossom and bloom and be able to go out and get these community sponsors and then have pride in what they're doing. The lower picture right here, you'll see a 4-Her speaking to one of the representatives that they invited to come to the pancake feed from the state legislature, came, and then they actually were giving tours to people who came to the fair to see what their exhibits were all about. I think this is a good example of what the fair could have, is community support on a larger scale. We just don't have the ability to bring large sponsorships in because we don't have anything to offer the businesses. In Jackson County, I was up there, and unfortunately, I didn't put a slide on this, but all of their benches are donated in memory of somebody, or all of the buildings are named after a business or organization. What we have to offer is we can hang up a banner for you for three days, and that doesn't get us very far with getting large donations from people in our community. Benefits of having our own fairgrounds and to the Shawnee County community, it fills an agricultural void in Shawnee County. We'd be able to host 4-H events and FFA activities, we'd be able to have a community event space, we'd also have the opportunity to host different livestock shows at a state and national level because they like to have those types of events at a county fairgrounds. It would also allow Shawnee County businesses and community organizations to provide sponsorships, and then it would allow Stormont Vale Event Center to be available for a more profitable event during the eleven days that are currently reserved for the Shawnee County Fair Board for the fair event. Really, in summary, the Fair Board feels it's the best course of action to keep, is to seek permission from the Commissioners to pursue securing a location for the Shawnee County Fair other than at the expo. We would need help with securing a new property, we would work on raising the money for the infrastructure, and then just funding in general, having those discussions.
So from the Fair Board Association's standpoint, rather than continue with the Stormont Vale Event Center, Manor Conference Center, Domer Agricultural, Ag Hall, to create a whole new facility dedicated just to the Shawnee County Fair? Is that where the Fair Board Association believes the best course of action?
Yes.
And the funding from that, are you asking for that to be one-hundred percent from Shawnee County taxpayers, or do you have a plan for that to be a public-private partnership to fundraise for? Where are we at with the Fair Association?
We, our biggest challenge right now is that we don't have a location for the fair. People want, we have people, we've gone out, we've actually had a kickoff fundraising event called Snowflakes and Clovers, which was primarily 4-Hers and families, and they've raised over thirteen-thousand dollars for a 501(c)(3) that we've started. Our biggest issue is we don't have land, and we don't know where, we can't afford land. But once the land is secured, we have potentially one building already funded, and we have other people who, and other businesses and organizations who we've spoken with that are interested, but they want to know where before we can proceed on with that. So we wouldn't be asking for money for the buildings, it would be more that we need help securing land.
I guess, as a tenured 4-Her myself, I absolutely agree with everything you said about 4-H. Everything from parliamentary procedure to speaking skills to leadership development to being able to learn a craft, whether anything from woodworking to education on entomology to doing livestock, all of those different skills are there, and for a lot of kids, I mean, even the dog shows, for my own children, Lego building, just, and you say, you know, what are you doing? You're building a Lego kit. But being able to sit down and explain to a judge what they did, why they did it, how they did it, all of those social skills and the leadership development I saw within my own children. The one thing that I, again, is I think a repeated criticism of our Shawnee County Fair is there was, as you've noted, a disconnect that it became just a 4-H event. And the public really did not see a connect as to why they should even come or that it even existed, because it became so 4-H focused. And again, I'm not, not knocking on 4-H one bit, but we need to incorporate the community if we're going to grow to what you would see in Riley County, in Douglas County, is that whole event. And I think part of that's including groups like the Master Gardeners, again, as you've indicated, different community organizations, and making it, again, a community event. I, I'm critical of the need for new property, new infrastructure, new funding, just because we're at a point in the county where our budgets are already stretched razor-thin, and coming up with more money, as you just heard a moment ago, talking about a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for mental health, that's going to be a struggle to find where that would come from through our Shawnee County budget. But looking at the funding of new property, new infrastructure, I think is going to be a huge ask for the Shawnee County taxpayers. But if we can find a way to use our existing facility, being more cost-effective for the Fair Association, because I think that's been the main criticism, is the Fair Association has been charged more as costs have gone up through insurance and offset, and looking at those expenses. But again, I think that the Fair Association being more open to outside groups, adding more groups, more events, those are the things I'd like to see.
And and I'm all for supporting that, but our problem is, is that the limitations that are set on us by the Stormont Vale Event Center limit what we're allowed to do. So the, going back to the challenge of you guys to us to raise money, the first year we had a food truck event because there wasn't a food contract in place.
We partnered with Advisors Excel, they came out.
We had a.
If you're, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna caution, if you're, if you need something to say, please come up to the podium, and it's not to be rude, but it's for those that aren't present.
Sure.
They can't, they can't hear or understand what's being said, so if you'll come to the podium.
Sherry Weiner, I, the first year I did bring in the food trucks because I was one of those people that said, our fair should be more, why aren't you doing more? So we brought in, the food trucks was my first initial event. We partnered with Advisors Excel the first year, they came in, they went and promoted it with their employees, they came in and they came behind them and paid for the food, part of the food trucks, but we had a humongous crowd. Since that has happened, we now have a food vendor in play at the Stormont Vale Event Center. There would have to be additional costs, plus now there's a point of sale. It was a cash basis. We were able to offset money for the fair from that event, but now we can't do that because the food truck vendors are not going to do the area or the proposed.
They were gonna charge two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the food trucks to come in, and then the.
Per food truck.
Per food truck. And then the Stormont Vale Event Center wanted them to use their point of sale, they would keep ten percent of their profits and then write them a check back, leaving the Fair Association, after we've organized the event, with no money from it. So we did make several thousand dollars off of the first year when we had food trucks. The next year, we also made a small percentage off of our food trucks, but it was very limited because of the changes in the Event Center home resolutions and the contracts with the OBG three-sixty. We've tried to bring other events in, and another issue was like the cornhole tournament. We made money off of the cornhole tournament last year, however, Stormont Vale Event Center informed us that they would serve alcohol at our events, even though we are a, supporting a 4-H event and 4-H is, we're dry, they don't have alcohol at their events, but we were told that they were going to do it anyways because it was also their event. We can't have community vendors in that we want to because they get charged, if they sell anything such as tea bags, or jams, or jellies, or any consumable item, they get charged two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to be at the building. And we don't feel as if we have high enough traffic to make them pay two-hundred-and-fifty dollars because we had charged vendors a fifty-dollar fee to be there while we were building, building the fair numbers and games. And so we feel as if our hands are tied, we can't raise any money, the charges keep going up at the Expo Center, we have no ability to do these things that we'd like to do because of the limitations of what we're given to work with. We had a Fair Board, again, I'll say it again, we're a group of volunteers. We came in three years ago, and we're tired. We're very frustrated, we're very tired, and I've explained it before, the first year, we learned a lot. They gave us rules like, well, this is really how it should be. So we came in the second year and we're like, all right, we understand the rules we have to follow, we understand what we need to tell you in advance, we need, we understand now, like, what we have to do. And then we were put, as I said, a brick wall was put in front of us, and we're like, all right, some challenges, we'll crawl over, and we got this. So we crawled over the brick wall, only to be met by a chain link fence with razor wire. Oh, nope, here's the issues that you're gonna have to deal with now. They were throwing changes at us two weeks before our event last year, trying to make things not happen. And quite frankly, I just don't see how we're ever gonna have a county fair that's more than just an exhibition of 4-H and FFA, which is extremely expensive to pay sixty-thousand dollars when we can't bring in what we want to bring in and tried to bring in. Like, we can't bring in the Mexican Fiesta candidates because they want to sell their tortillas, but it's not worth them to pay two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for their candidates to come in because they're barely gonna make that back. But if we could bring in all these different groups, which I always say, I'm a dietitian, I get it, food is where people come for, we would bring in different food trucks, we would bring in different vendors, those people all bring their community. Those people all bring their community with them and that's how we get people to the fair is by having diverse options and opportunities. But at the rate we're going, we're not able to do that. Like I said, back on the slide, we'd love to have more vendors come in, but we had to tell vendors that they'd have to pay two hundred and fifty dollars and we had five last year back out because they were like, well, that's not worth it to us. So, where we feel tied, that we can expand and we can't grow and we can't do these things because of the contracts that are in place with OBG and OBG three sixty.
So, I'm gonna put our county counselor on the spot. He doesn't know.
I was thinking the same thing.
We, we have a contract with the OBG three sixty regarding management of the Stormont Vale Event Center. And then we have a separate contract with OBG regarding catering. We have a commitment to the Shawnee County Fair Association that's an item on our budget for there to be a Shawnee County Fair. And then we have the Shawnee, or the Kansas State Extension, which is 4-H, which is a separate entity. From a legal perspective, help me out, how do we correlate between this disconnect between these organizations?
Well, it's, it's a bit complicated, but Kyle in my office and myself have been looking at this issue for quite some time. We had a meeting last week at OBG to go through some of this at the Veil. And everything that the fair is saying at the podium right now is true. I, as I sat here listening, I didn't hear anything in my investigation and Kyle's work that contradicted what they just said. When Shawnee County entered into the concessions and catering contract with OBG, I think that's the source of sixty, seventy percent of the conflict that we're having right now. On the event side, some of the things that they talked about, I think we can work through. But the catering contract is an issue. And when it was initially entered into, there was no exception made in that contract for fair. With that being said, we are the owner. I'm the contract administrator. There are some things that we can do and we've been trying to do some of those things. But, and, and I don't want to be too one-sided in favor of the Fair Board. OBG does have real expenses to put the fair on. They do provide some people. They do provide services. And it would be, it would, and they are a for-profit company. So, it would, we could tell them to do some things and knock some things off, but I don't know how we could tell them to take a loss. Now, where that line is, I'm not for sure. We can continue to keep talking, but at some point in time, I would need direction from this board about where to put that line.
Well, I think that when we entered into the contract for catering.
Concessions and catering.
Concessions and catering.
And, and that matters, and I make that correction because that's the, the alcohol issue. Because the alcohol's being sold at the concession areas, which the Fair Board doesn't control.
I mean, we were looking at either continuing a relationship with entity of Heart, Heart of America or going to OBG. And at the time, it appeared that going with OBG made sense by having it in one entity, one organization. But it seems that the unintended consequence is that we are hurting our partners with the Fair Association and the Fair Board.
Yeah. I, we, we, the other thing that we changed, by changing that contract, we changed management philosophies in those two companies. Heart of America was a laissez-faire, go along to get along. The professionalism probably wasn't the highest, but at the same time, they got along. They did those things to get along. OBG is a very professional company. They're very minded about the contract. They like to go through the contract and off the top of their heads, they can cite, well, paragraph three point two says this, and they're right. And they're also geared towards profit. That is, I would say they're more geared towards making money. And when I say profit, that's us too. I mean, they're, we're getting a cut of the profit that they make, Shawnee County is. So, I, I'm not trying to say that is a bad thing. We want them to do that in most cases. So, they are more minded about where the profit centers are and how to extract those profits. They're much more focused on that than Heart of America was. But that was a tactical decision that this board made to, to go in that direction. And most of the time, that's gonna be fine, but here's one of the issues when we're dealing with a nonprofit. A nonprofit, by the way, that we're statutorily mandated to help out, as, as is the Extension Office, we've created some tension and we need to work together to figure out ways to release the tension.
Mr. Mase?
Well, I know there's also been issues with, you know, we've talked about having a carnival, but we can't because of the contract with the carnival that was here a month ago. There's a-
We found that out too.
There's a-
A window.
A non-compete window where we can't have a carnival within, I don't know, four months or something like that of, of the date of the other one. And I know that Kellen and the event staff has tried to kind of tie those together with their new contracts, but it hasn't worked out because the carnival has a schedule that they're working with. And so, I mean, that would be nice also. With regards to a new location, I think it, it makes sense. It's just a matter of funding. I mean-
How many acres do you need?
We're asking for forty minimum.
So, and that's a big chunk of land. I mean, we do own a lot of land, parkland, a lot of which has deed restrictions as to what we can use them for. But I would think this would be considered a recreational purpose. So, some of that land that we've been given from the federal government back in the nineteen seventies and whatnot that we aren't really sure what to do with might actually work for this. But, I mean, that's probably something your office would need to look at. The problem is utilities and, and the structures and, you know, the parking lots and, and all of that stuff is gonna be expensive.
We can come up with our-
I, I guess I just, are the Shawnee County taxpayers going to be accepting five, ten, twenty million dollars' worth of expenses for an eleven-day event? When we have an existing structure already and what we're really needing to do is do some contract revisions. And if we do some contract revisions, we can save the taxpayers eleven million dollars of creating a new facility that, again, we're talking about an eleven-day event. So, that's kind of jumping in there.
So, I do, as of this morning, I have a series of emails. We're try, I am setting up a meeting to talk with the supervisor of our onsite staff for the concessions and catering. So, this person that I'm trying to set a meeting with is not based here in Topeka. It's that person's supervisor. So, I will have a chance to talk with that person. I would appreciate it if, well, I, I would like to, well, I guess we'll talk about it later, but that, that is an occasion that I'll have to talk with the person I've never talked with before.
I think that a message needs to be sent either directly or indirectly through you to OBG that we are very frustrated with how this has worked out. This is not what I intended when we did a catering contract.
No.
And so, the frustration isn't with the Fair Association. The fair's, the frustration is with our contractor and whether or not we need to continue a relationship with them or not.
And again, I don't want to be put into a position of defending OBG, but I do think they will work with us. I just need to know where to set the line. And maybe the, the four of us, I can meet with you individually and go over with the three of you where the line should be. And, and I'm not telling you, I don't think OBG would say no to that. I, I, I don't know, but-
And this really isn't even an issue with our general manager, Kellen Seitz, as the concession and catering is a separate general manager through their facility.
Like I said, the majority of what we heard today is on the concession side.
If I may interject, Dustin Minghurelli is my name. A lot of the, the issue herein lies that you're paying sixty thousand dollars for exclusive use of a facility that you don't have exclusive use of. Because, and I'll defend OBG. They're a for-profit business. I understand that. They can't make money on something that doesn't make money. If you allow the fair, if, if, if you're not interested in potentially starting a new facility, what I would propose would be to allow the Fair Board to have exclusive use of the facility for a period of time to see what can happen. Again, the first year that the new Fair Board came on, there was a lot of excitement. There was a lot of build. There was good step, steps were being made. And then it's kind of petered out since then. A different example, so I'm, I'm from Crawford County, southeast Kansas. The city of Gerard owns the fairgrounds that the fairgrounds is on. The Fair Association has exclusive use of that facility three hundred and sixty-five days a year. They do all the renting. They do the maintenance. They take care of everything. Their lease is for one dollar for the next one hundred years. They pay a penny a year for the facility and they maintain it. They do everything as part of it. I understand the Expo is a lot bigger than the facility there.
So, we're gonna stand up for a minute.
At one hour, our policy, and Ms. Lewis always reminds me, at one hour, it's time to stand and stretch and make sure we get good circulation and blood flow. So, continue.
So, again, if, if we're paying sixty thousand dollars because we're paying for the rental of the facility, we're paying for the electricity, the internet, the security, we're paying for everything as the association, which is the county essentially paying their own landowners or their leases money to rent the facility. And then again, we're turning around and we have these caveats that you cannot follow. So, if, if the Fair Association had exclusive use, is what it actually says in the, the resolution that was just passed, the fair could actually do some things. However, the carnival is an issue. If you wanted to have a carnival, that kind of creates a problem. However, if you had a different facility, then you could have a carnival because the, from what we were told from the carnival concessionaire was it's, the no inter, no conflict was for the location, not necessarily the city or the county, but the actual location at the Expo. So, there's, there's a lot to it. There could be a lot of momentum built. Again, I will defend OBG because I know they're, they're trying to make money. But they essentially have their hand in the back pocket of the Fair Association who's paying them to not be involved and they continue to pick the back pocket of the Fair Association.
To be further, in the back pocket of every event that happens there.
Right. But other events, such as the wrestling tournament that was held, essentially, visit Topeka, pay the fifty thousand dollars to rent the facility to have it there? For what I'm being told.
Every event is unique and every event's different.
I, I get it, you know, but, but again, if, if the Fair Association wants to have an event, it's contradictory for OBG to have their hand in the back pocket of the Fair Association who's doing all the work to make the event what it is. However, this is the first year that there's gonna be a large event, as in the concert, at the fair since I've been around and we've been in Topeka for, since two thousand and ten. I don't remember anything ever happening down there. That was, that is OBG's opportunity to make money off the fair. Hey, you do that event, it's your money. You make money off of that. Believe 4-H and the fair alone and let them be able to be productive in their own assets.
And my understanding with that concert is that there's some kind of a fee that's going to the Fair Board out of that or?
So, when Kellen initially started talking to the new Fair Board in two thousand and twenty-one about it, we were told that we would get eight percent of what the management company gets. Which gets tricky because we learned last year when they were going to give us a percent of the concessions when we were talking food service. Well, it turned out being they were gonna sell, long story short, we were cut a twenty-five dollar check. And we were like, oh, here's your money, because it's a percent of a percent of something that they got. And so, we asked this year when the concert was done if, that we're still going to be a percent. But I guess they're co-
Co-
Co-promoting it?
Co-promoted.
Co-promoted, so they'll get a lesser amount and then we'll get a percent of what the management company gets. But we had to ask for that because that was a conversation we had had previously. And what we learned is when we have conversations, if it's not written in paper, it doesn't mean anything later. So, we're, we kind of very much feel like we have to be nagging, which is not our style, to be like, oh, we need that written down so that it doesn't change on us.
And that is also if the event makes money.
Yeah, only if they make a profit off of it will the Fair Board get any money from it.
Well, thank you for bringing this to our attention today. We've got meetings set up this week, correct, Mr. Rector?
Well, I'm trying, we are going to have a meeting. It hasn't been set yet.
Okay. But we've received your message loud and clear. So, thank you.
Thank you.
This is, our next item is public comment. If there's any person from the public that wishes to speak on any item, they're more than welcome to do so. I would just ask that you state your name when you come on up.
My name's Robert Homer. I live at six-two-nine Northwest Sixty-second Street. And I've got a couple of different entities, entities that I have to deal with. I've got a water runoff issue that's crossing across the private property because the Shawnee County Public Works takes care of all the striped roads in this area of north and Soldier Township takes care of the unstriped, unmarked roads. So, I've got two different issues actually going on here. Water that's running not down the ditch line, but going in between the two property lines is actually cutting across and going down to the lower area and flooding their houses out. Now, when I go over to my, the side street, I think it's Westbrook, and talk to the neighbors over there, the, the culverts are all plugged up. The ditches are silted in. Water will go like three houses down and it cuts across the road because there's the culvert, culvert pipes are full.
Which, which area is this? What's the?
I, I was, I, I'm trying to work on it between Rochester Road, Topeka Boulevard, Sixty-second Street, Northwest Sixty-second Street and Fifty-eighth Street. In that area, that small community right there, that's where all the flooding is happening.
Okay. Cause I, I would let, and I'm sorry to interrupt and I apologize, but-
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I would let you know that we do have a Public Works taking action on some property that is on Rochester Road that is causing silting and culverts to plug. And so, there is action already being taken by Shawnee County Public Works. Again, not to interrupt, I apologize.
No, it's okay. I've already spoken to Shawnee County Public Works. I spoke with Jerry King, went up and had a meeting with him. He sent out one of his representatives. I've been up there five years. And three and a half years ago, I had the same issue with water running across private property. And I, it's flooding houses, the neighbors below me. So, I decided to take action. And this Sean Lucas came out three and a half years ago and dug the ditch out in front of my house in the property just to the east of me, but didn't continue further down where at one time, I don't know how long ago, before my time, they built a berm there because his house is lower in the valley and planted trees. Well, this Sean Lucas tells me he can't fill in this void that's in between the two properties. They need an engineer to put dirt in a hole from where the ditch, I'm, I'm on the south side of the road. So, what it does is it goes like this in between, so that there's actually no real barrier for the ditch line for the water just to, you know, so it comes across private property. And I've also talked with, his name is John Tipton. He's from Soldier Township. And tried to get him to go over and just look at the neighborhood, the side streets that I'm looking at to try to take something, take care of an action, maintenance, basically. He told me he's not gonna do it. So, I said, well, what can I do? So, I went up to his office and got a bunch of his business cards and started handing them out throughout the neighborhood. I think he gave me seven the first day. That's not gonna do me much good when I got two hundred people I want to talk to. So, I went back up there and got thirty more, asked the young lady there, said, can I get about a hundred of them? She says, no, go hand those out first. Well, I don't know why. I'm, I'm only doing this for my neighbors just so that their houses quit flooding. Matter of fact, when we had that big rain about three weeks ago or so, there was a couple of kids that got the kayak out. That's how, how, how bad the water runoff is. They got a kayak out and went down the ditch. So, you know, this is the problem we're having up here and this is my area and I'd like to see something.
Well, I can tell you that I'm not sure if it's the same area or not, but as of last week, there was a stop-work order issued. So, that would stop all farming operations and all work until the erosion control is in place. So, I'm, again, I'm not sure if it's the same property that you're talking about. I would need to, to meet with you. But I can tell you that Shawnee County is taking this very seriously when we're having this much road erosion and runoff. And so, these are issues that are, are very, and causing the culverts to silt over in this area. So, this is something that I am very much aware of and, again, if, if it's the same property. same property, but that may not be something, and it is a Shawnee County is issue on that front.
Uh, I've, I've made a lot of phone calls, so it might be my property. I've tried to call everybody in this, then I found out about these meetings that I can actually verbally say something to you.
So I get the map pulled up, the GPS, and I found where you live. Could you describe to me again where it's flooding?
Uh, there's a house just to the west of me. You'll see the berm built there.
Okay.
Uh, it's in between the berm, when they built the berm, they brought the berm, instead of bringing it across to my property line and actually putting a ditch there.
Mm-hmm.
They left it like a swale in between. So when the water goes down, it goes down to the property line and then it goes back south. And then it floods the houses down below me.
Okay. I think I see what you're talking about here, so.
It's just a small dip in, in between the two property lines.
Okay.
And that's an issue I've been dealing with, uh, for, well, three and a half years ago, I tried to get, do something and really didn't get no action.
Okay.
And then, uh, there again, Mr. Tipton from the Soldier Township, he's pretty reluctant on even coming out there to look. So I figured I'd throw my hand in it and see what I can do.
The, the only thing I would add, sir, is that Soldier Township also has meetings that you can go to.
Oh, they do?
And they have three elected officials and they have a township administrator, all who would be in, you know, in the ranks, they would be ahead of Mr. Tipton.
Okay, yes, that's where I need to go. That's what I was trying to get to, to figure out how, where, where can I go? I'm new to this, so.
Their township administrator has actually been to one of our meetings.
She's been to a couple, actually, yeah.
Yes, yeah, so.
So, can you-
Catch me after the meeting.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time.
All right, thank you. Is there any other public comment this morning?
Henry McClure, good morning.
Good morning.
I really enjoyed our, um, candidate forum the other day up at the Greater Topeka Partnership. It was a shame we didn't have the press there. I, I thought there would be more dignitaries and V I Ps. Molly and Matt didn't even stay for the meeting, but one of the things that I found most interesting was your desire, Commissioner Cook's desire to put the planning commissions back together. That's interesting. And so between now and the election, we might as well just get started on it. We could get started on it today. I had a meet, I, I was actually on the M P O and the Planning Commission, and I think your lawyer was around back then when it was disbanded. And he, he can give you great detail, I think, and who disbanded it, why it was disbanded it, disbanded. I can give you my perception as a planning commissioner and a member of the M P O. And, um, the Metropolitan Planning Organization was underneath or over, it was, um, the Planning Commission was responsible to be the M P O. So what happened when Governor Docking got the federal funds, he said, anywhere there's a Metropolitan Planning Commission made up of the county and the city, well, they're qualified to be the M P O. And at the time, the county didn't submit a capital improvement program. And, um, as the M P O, we refused to approve the transportation plan because they weren't meeting the federal guidelines. And the way the M P O was to work back then was, uh, the county submitted their capital improvement pro, program, the city, uh, submitted their capital improve, improvement program, and then you, uh, you chop it up, you'd talk about it, then you'd hold public involvement. You, where, we would actually, we went out, we were the first group to ever engage the public and, and present the overall transportation plan. And we complied with federal law. And I don't think we're complying with federal law today under the M T P O. The M T P O today, uh, one of the guys on it told me, you haven't met in person in three years. It's like, and, um, I can't ever remember a public involvement meeting. So, uh, I was disappointed when the, uh, the, and it was led by one of the county commissioners at the time, disbanding the planning commission, which created the county planning commission, the city planning commission, and another, uh, that's all we need is another organization run by a government, the M T P O. Uh, later on, I got, uh, appointed, I was appointed by Joan Wagner originally when I first moved back to Topeka in, uh, the year two thousand. So I enjoyed being a part of it. It didn't help me at all professionally. It was really kind of one of the worst things a real estate broker developer could really do, but, um, the insight that, that, um, I thought it was, it was good that I could share my experience. By the time I'd moved back, I'd already renovated forty million dollars worth of projects from the private enterprise. The, the, what's really neat about the private enterprise versus government, our deals have to make money. You know, it's a shame this Fair Board was here just a minute ago because this is something that should have never happened. We, we've got attorneys, uh, involved with making the contract and we should have also had attorneys advise us, well, you know, that's going to be, this is going to be the downside to it. But here again, just the fair not being able to use our assets to do something for the community. So what if it, 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 uh, morphed into more of a four H thing? Well, it, it sounds like from what I understand, if they would have been able to work with the people that ran the fair, or the Expo Center, it, it could have, it could have stayed a fair. I'm, I remember when I was a kid, the racetrack down there, you could hear it. But, um, I did have a meeting with Brett Blackburn and we talked about, we were really encouraged. And, uh, Brett and I would like to, uh, be on a, uh, a committee. It won't, you won't have to go out and hire a consultant. You've got a guy with forty-four years of real estate experience that was on the M P O, that was on the planning commission, and Brett Blackburn also was on the planning commission from two thousand and three to two thousand and five. He created such a hubbub that they said, they got so mad at him, they go, well, why don't you just go run for city council? He did and won. And then he changed the planning commission around to where, you know, there weren't the, uh, there were professionals on it. You had some engineers and some architects and some contractors and some real estate people. You had somebody with, um, you know, experience in the industry. The thing, the thing that I, I can tell you more than anything is it's dysfunctional if it takes me two years in the city to get the, uh, uh, Pizza Hut, uh, building permit and look how long it took you to get your pool that you're running on to, uh, in Oakland. So maybe the county needs to run the planning commission in the future and, um, there's, there's some ways, and, and we'd also like to, to put the M P O back together underneath the planning commission because where it is right now, it's not working. Um, well, who's gonna, who's gonna then vote on it? Well, you got J E T O. J E T O can do something. J E T O can, you guys get together quarterly for meetings that you pay a company three and a half million dollars to tell you how to do things. It's not growing the, uh, it's not growing our population or lowering our tax base. So you ca, you probably got plenty of time to look at the planning, uh, what the planning commission, the new planning commissions bring it forward. But if you really had guts, what you do, like what we did in Ventura, in Ventura, California, um, and, and Ventura, California, Ven, the county of Ventura is huge. It's a, it's a huge economic, uh, community to California. After the planning commission, it's over. It doesn't go on to any other, uh, governing body. So you've got to be really, uh, uh, cognizant of who you put on the planning commission, that they're, uh, they're informed about the community, they, they're going to have responsibility. But we gotta, we gotta start getting out of our own way in things. I mean, today, this, this, uh, Fair Board is a great example of how we're in our own way. The, um, so we want to help you with a campaign promise. We'd like to, uh, uh, King Corbett's on the, uh, County Planning Commission. He's expressed interest in making some changes. Uh, there's others, I'm sure, on the city, you know, but we've got to think, we've got to think that we, as county commissioners, can deal with the city because otherwise, for example, the majority of, of county, you know, city council district one and two are in, in your district. You've got a certain amount of districts in yours, Bill's got a certain amount of districts in his, and then just, I mean, I'm focusing a little on district two because you've expressed that it's just not my job to deal with the city. So one, two, all of three and most of four, those people really are going unrepresented to when the city of Topeka does something wrong. And, uh, we're definitely, I, I, I sent you guys all a note the other day when we were having a, a discussion about the planning commission and, uh, nobody endorsed the idea of getting the city out of the three mile radius. And I thought that would be, uh, um, I thought that'd be a step in the right direction because the city has no business, uh, stepping out into the three mile radius and anybody that lives within that three mile radius doesn't have an elected official to complain to. I mean, not that you're looking for any, but from the city limit to the three mile radius, if all the decisions are going through the city, the, uh, the citizens are completely neutered. We, and especially if our county commissioners say, well, I can't do anything, that's in the city. It's your obligation to do it for us. That's why we elected you. You should lead the charge. We've got to get these fairground things out of the way. We've got to let development happen in the county and if the city's getting in our way, it's your job to go down and help us. So we, we, this is actually a good deal. You've got a couple of people who would like to help you with one of your campaign promises you made up at the, uh, at Greater Topeka Partnership. Appreciate the opportunity to discuss it and it was fun doing that, it was fun being a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment this morning? Mr. Mays?
Nothing for me.
And nothing for myself. We're adjourned until Thursday.